Because this was an initiative that was started from the goal study session from the council, but also then came to a subcommittee between myself and... Do you have a title Ginny?
Former.
Former, at the time was an interim city council member, now a former city council member. So with that, I'm going to bring up our city manager Lori. She's going to talk a little bit about the structure of tonight's meeting.
Good welcome.
Thanks for that. I won't be singing though. So we did devise this meeting a little bit differently than our previous study sessions that you probably have attended. We, as you can see, have set the room up differently so that the council is down here on the floor where they can better interact with the audience. And the way that the structure is going to be tonight is you're going to hear from Lynn and from Ginny more about why they put together this plan, how they put together the plan, and what they heard through doing that work. Then we're going to give you all a chance to share your feedback with us about your thoughts on a part of the plan, not on the entire plan. If you've had a chance to take a look at the plan, you probably noticed there's a number of implementation steps in there. Everything from having the city manager become the public information officer, down to changes to our website, et cetera. We really aren't asking you tonight to comment on those parts. That really is some work that I need to do with staff after this meeting to figure out how we would implement what comes out of this meeting, based on what the council tells us at the end. One of the changes, another one of the changes that you're going to have tonight or see tonight is we're not structuring an official public comment opportunity. We're not going to have you stand up at the podium for three minutes and give comment. Your opportunity really is in some small group discussions that we've structured. We think that's a better way of hearing from you. It's more informal. We think it'll be more effective. And again, this is a structure that we're trying for this topic tonight, and we're going to see how it works. When we get to that point where we're doing the small group discussion, I have some staff here tonight who are going to help with that process. I'll tell you more about it when we get to that point in the agenda. Once we have all that comment from you, we're going to collect it on some flip chart paper. And then the council's going to have time at the end to talk about what they heard from you all, what's in the plan, and any other direction that they want to give to me as I go back and work with the staff to come back to them at a future meeting with an implementation plan. So that's what we're expecting to do tonight. Hopefully, it fits with what you were expecting to do as well. And I think with that, let me just add one other comment. And that is partly why we're structuring the small group work in the way that we are, and again, just to be focused on a part of the plan, is because we didn't want to ask you to redo the work. As you probably saw, if you looked at the plan, Lynn and Ginny worked with some focus groups and did a lot of work with them and then subsequent to that, those meetings. And so we're not asking you to redo that work. We just want to give you a chance to give us more feedback on some of the parts that they came up with. So hopefully that makes sense. So I think with that, Mayor Stone, I'll give it back to you.
All right. So this all started, I guess, was the middle of 2012, maybe the third quarter of 2012, at our first goal study session that the city had had in a long time. And those discussions, it came up that communications, or that the city communications could be improved. And there's a lot of benefits for doing that. That was through that goal study session. It then came to the council. The council approved it as a formal goal. And then going on a number of months after the council changed over at the end of 2012, I guess it was the first quarter of 2013, the council readdressed it and reaffirmed the communications initiative as a goal. So then that was the current body of council at that point. So this has been something I know that the whole council's been very eager for, and we've definitely talked about it a couple different times. So in the creation of the plan... Oh, we're going to talk about that part, aren't we? Okay. So we know at, with the communications, it's kind of the bedrock, I think, of one of the things that the cities does. And getting the information out there and also hearing from the public is going to be vital for anything for the city going forward. In my opinion, you know, the city's kind of transitioning, and so we're learning and finding our ways about how to do things. And we're going to need as much feedback as possible and also have as much information out there as possible so that the public is in a full, it fully understands the needs, not the needs of the city, but where the city is and the challenges that we're facing going forward. So with that, Ginny's going to talk a little bit about the process that we used to create the plan.
Thank you Lynn. So once the council approved moving forward on that, Lynn and I had agreed to serve as a subcommittee. And so we began our work, a lot of which started with just some research on, you know, what the most effective way to move forward in terms of a communication plan. And there were a number of things we did, and they're identified in the plan itself, but I'll quickly go through them just to update you on them. We asked for, and we did an internal assessment of each of the departments in the city. We needed to know what kind of communication, you know, things were happening already at a department level. So each of the departments completed an assessment and provided us with all sorts of examples of the kinds of communication vehicles that they are currently using. And we were able then to get an assessment of what the city organization was doing just, you know, generally in terms of communication. We conducted a focus group with some key community people, some business people. We also conducted a focus group with members of the city commissions and committees, and that was a real valuable process in terms of getting information and feedback about what the city was doing well and what the city could be doing in terms of communication. We also individually talked with some key people in the community to get some feedback from a number of, just a number of individuals that we talked with. And we came back and got some input at a study session with the council. So we got certainly some feedback from individual members of the council. Lynn and a couple of other members of the council had an opportunity to attend a League of California Cities meeting, and there was some, several, or at least one major session on communication techniques. And so we were able to look at that material that had been done. And then we also researched what other public agencies are doing in terms of their communications plan. So we sort of, we tried to put all of that together and recognizing that there were probably two kind of underlying parameters that we needed to consider, guidelines that we needed to consider in putting the plan together. And one of them was there were obviously some resource constraints. And so we weren't looking at a plan that was going to spend a lot of money because we just don't have the financial resources to do it. So we really wanted to look at putting some ideas together that could be handled in-house, could be handled by just changing procedures and doing it in that way as opposed to bringing in, you know, a whole group of consultants to revamp the website or to create a whole new, you know, a whole new communication system. So that was certainly an underlying focus to that. So anyway, that's the sort of process we used. Out of that came some interesting comments and interesting information that helped us really put the plan together. And I think Lynn's going to review those.
Yeah, that was a good exercise. You know, there's a number of people that participated in the focus groups here, which is great. But some of the key points or the high points that were incorporated into the plan, and in the back of the plan, it actually lists all the bullet points from the focus group. So you can take a look through that and just hear everything. But that citizens want to hear accurate, factual, objective information about the city. We heard that a couple times. So just kind of straightforward facts that, you know, not sugarcoating where the city is at any one point, or, you know, if the situation is, the financial situation is poor, that, you know, let people want to hear the information straight. And that the city also needs to share positive aspects of what the city is doing. And I think that's something that Ginny and I spoke about a number of times, and we all spoke about it in goal study sessions, that when the city was doing something that was very positive, it wasn't very often publicized. Or there's a lot of programs that we do that people just don't know about that are city functions that are really positive. The website was a clear thing that people wanted it to be very user-friendly and up-to-date in a timely manner. It's, you know, nowadays, I think, when you have, whether it's organizations that you're interacting with, or you're buying something online or what have you, that the online interface is so important. And sometimes that's the only thing that people see about you. And I know that, you know, in business, and there's business owners here as well, that sometimes that's the only thing people know about you is your website. And you make judgments on that. So it's so important to not only have it up-to-date, but also have it user-friendly. And that's something we heard a couple times. And then the proactive communication. I think that's something we spoke about, I think, as a council at the goal study session as well, is to really get out there with the information so that there isn't a need for people to be asking the questions of, well, why did this happen this way? Or tell me, let me get to the bottom of, you know, whatever it may be. I'm sure we all have different examples of that. But being proactive in our communication is something we heard over and over again. I think it's vital that we do that. A good, positive thing that we heard is that people felt that the city council is approachable, and they are willing to listen to ideas or hear feedback. Or I know a lot of my colleagues are answering emails a lot, and I try to as well, as many as we can, and try to be very available to people. And that's something that we heard that's a positive. And then we heard over and over again, and also with staff, that social media is kind of the next thing that they would be open to, and that people would love to see social media. It's just so, it's set up in a way that's so user-friendly, you can just plug in and plug out right away. We do have a social media presence right now. I believe PBNR has a social media presence right now. And it's such a part of people's day-to-day, you know, you're getting updates on your phone or what have you, to plug into that would be great. So, and I think as we go through these objectives, too, I want to say for both the public and staff and the council, is that, you know, we realize, and Ginny touched on it, that there's going to be a lot of constraints, you know, just our capability constraints. A lot of these things, and there's a lot of good things in here, but we're going to have to prioritize what we do and look at that as a community and really, you know, check one box at a time and hopefully continue to move forward in getting that ideal communication that we have. But we are going to come up to a capability constraint point. And, you know, I say that for a couple different reasons, but I also don't want staff to think that we're going to be like, you know, this is what we want. We want all this stuff, you know, tomorrow. But it's going to be an evolution of this, and we realize the constraints with that. So I want to make sure that we mention that. And also too, in the findings here, I think that's one of the reasons why we're approaching the meeting the way we are. Come on up, please. Jump on in.
It's impossible.
Of course. So that's one of the reasons why we're structuring the meeting this way, is just like our city manager Lori said, that, you know, we want to try something different with this, more engagement, hearing a back-and-forth, because in a normal or a typical study session that we've done in the past, you know, hearing three minutes from somebody doesn't really get the full conversation going. Or if somebody has a question, you know, you can get some more synergy and back-and-forth going. And that I think will be very valuable, and I think we all value. So bear with us too as we try this new thing, but we're doing it to try to get more engagement and to really have everyone working on the same side of the table for this. And then hopefully, as these are successful, we want to go forward and bring this to bigger issues that are more, sometimes more divisive, more challenging. But that level of communication hopefully will be there. Want to talk about the goals?
So out of that whole process and all of the discussion and input we heard, came actually four goals for the communication plan. And I'd just quickly review those so that as you're beginning to think about and provide some input in the small group process, you'll kind of have that overview of the overall goals for the communication plan. They were, first of all, to increase, make sure that we increase community understanding of and knowledge of the city and its services, its fiscal situation, how the city structure itself works. Secondly, we hope that out of that, out of all of the communication efforts would come increased support for city government, for the services, and that that would come from a positive interaction between city and community. Third, that all of this would result in increased citizen participation and involvement in local government and in all of the pieces, the committees and the processes that happen in the city. And then last, that overall, the whole trust in the community would increase as a result of the positive relations and the effective communications that have been established. So those are the sort of overall, overreaching goals for this communication plan. And so I think we're ready to pass it on.
Okay. Well, this is for us, I think, over a year or so of developing this, this is the exciting part, which is really getting your feedback. And for that, we're going to bring up city manager. She's going to facilitate.
Could I have the staff facilitators go ahead and go to your spot in the room? We've got four different areas designated. The other staff who are part of the audience, you're invited to sit in with one of the groups and participate just like anybody else, because there's a few folks who are here. So the way that we're going to work this is each of the groups, you'll see Joe over here under the exit sign, and Van. Back in the corner, you'll have Kathy and Heather. In this corner, you've got George and Mike. And over here, you've got Sandra and Ed. So those are our four facilitators. You can go to any of those that you'd like. We have about six people per group, which should just about be about the size of this group. And just drag your chairs over there. It's very informal. And once you get there, they're going to explain to you what the process will include. There are a couple of questions they've got, they're going to pose to you. They're going to collect your feedback. And then when the session, when that part of the session is done, then we'll all come back together and all facilitate bringing all of your comments together onto one body of work for the council to then take back with us to City Hall and for me to take and have as a reference for coming up with the implementation plan. So before we break, any questions about the process so far? Yes?
Talk about time.
Time? We're going to have about 10 minutes per part of this session. So I'll keep track of the time and give you guys a heads up when we need to shift gears on the questions. But roughly total for this part, about 30 minutes for the session. I don't think this is going to go longer than two hours, maybe even shorter than that. So that's for expectations. And I didn't talk about sort of the logistics, because I thought all of you probably know, but there's cookies and drinks in the back. Please help yourself. The restroom's over behind this partition. Please help yourself. Be, you know, be relaxed. Do whatever you need to participate fully in this small group discussion.
Lori?
Yes?
Do you want people to go from station to station, or once they go, they're at one station?
Once you go, you're part of that little group. So just stay there. It's good clarification. Thanks, Mike. And then the council's role is to sort of wander around and eavesdrop on the conversation so they can have the benefit of hearing what you're saying as the staff is collecting it. So that's part of, that's their role. Not engage, yeah. They're not there to talk, they're there to listen. So with that, I'll ask you to go ahead and find a group to be part of.
I didn't bring my copy.
Well, I brought mine, so I didn't even look. You can share.
I don't know. I said you're not engaged, so I didn't worry about it.
I know, we're not... I got my notes, so if you want to use those, right.
Because I couldn't bring it up on this, but this is stupid.
I know, don't... I bet they have. I would be surprised if they don't have, because there's a lot of people here, so there might be out.
I think you get settled for a minute.
Do you want to play some?
So the, uh, the next part of our process is to collect the information you've generated, all those additions that you've generated onto one document. And actually, I'm going to ask, Ed, would you mind moving the, um, I want to use something to write on. I might borrow your, uh, whiteboard as an ESOL. Um, I'm gonna make one big list, that's right, yes. Um, I can do it, actually, that's okay, yeah. Yes, please. So while we're having that happen, let me just, uh, we decided that it would be really great to get your feedback about how tonight went. Um, and so I'm going to pass around some sign-in sheets I've made up, and if you give us your name and your email address, then we can reach out to you after this meeting and get some feedback from you about how this went for you. I'm going to pass these out while we're setting up. I think I could ask you to start behind you? So again, thank you for all of your work. Thank you to our facilitators for their efforts in managing all of the group discussion. Hopefully, you found it enlightening and a little fun and interesting to hear from each other, and interesting also to meet some staff people that you might not have met before. Um, what I'd like to do is to have the facilitators, one of you, um, share with, uh, the council, the group, and me, and I'll write them up here, one of the additions that your group came up with, and we're going to go around to each group one at a time, and I'll collect them. So if there's overlap, you don't have to repeat something that another group came up with, but this way we'll have one master list of everything. Does that make sense? So, Joe, let's start with you. I'm going to give you the mic, and I'll go up here, and then you can hand it around the circle.
And just to make sure we're doing the communication channels? Right now? The communication channels?
Yes.
All right.
The additions to our list.
All right. Uh, one of the items my group came up with was the use of YouTube as a form of communication and information sharing.
So for us, this isn't necessarily new. Social media was on there, but our group specifically wanted, wanted to recommend Twitter and Nextdoor.
Our, our group would like, uh, centralized information and referral for the city, sort of a centralized contact with information.
And we would like to add, uh, non-cable television city programming.
What's that look like?
Um, video programming available on satellite, uh, TV or, um, analog antenna.
All right, another one from my group was the use of a message board or marquee, similar to, uh, you know, the one used at the community center right now, but more of them within the city perhaps.
So the list includes newsletters, but our group wanted them to be online if possible, so at least one city online newsletter, maybe a global city newsletter.
Um, we would like to see a master calendar for, um, all city activities, not just the cities, but all the activities happening in the city.
Um, similar to that, but, um, a calendar for regional events, uh, such as Mavericks, uh, pumpkin festival, so that we can bring in some people into town that may be traveling through otherwise.
Okay, I'll go. Uh, we chose use of a local radio station.
Keeping with the events calendar idea, our group also said see wide events calendar, but specifically recommend Google as the application for that.
We'd like to see an interactive electronic kiosk.
Printed and electronic maps based on activity types, sporting events, et cetera.
I just had one question about the centralized information for the city. Were they talking more about something interactive or something that the, um, that the people of the city could contribute to, or they wanted all the information in one place because it said centralized information for the city? So if they can just comment on that.
I think it has to do with the point of contact. Uh, instead of sending folks to a bunch of different places to get information, I think someone was talking about making, you know, ten phone calls to get something done, instead to, uh, be able to call or contact that one person who could then kind of either answer or make sure to send you to the right place. And if anybody in our group wants to chime in on that, it's okay, too.
Okay, uh, back to me, and we also had a common denominator there. Our group, uh, also agreed on that. Um, and also to identification of communication medium being used by the city, and maybe more specifically by department.
So electronic communication by department?
Uh, just identification, maybe what, what is the fire department particularly using? What is the police department in particular using, and public works, et cetera?
A modern day welcome wagon for new residents or new homebuyers?
We had, uh, PIO, dedicated staff, which I know is part of the plan, I don't know if it was on that list or not, but, uh, dedicated staff came up, was sort of a theme, and, uh, in terms of tech support, too, was something that folks, a dedicated tech support.
Um, we came up with statistics on city services or performance measures.
Excuse me, could somebody clarify performance measures on what area or, you know what I mean? What is the goal? Can you clarify performance measures?
Yeah, um, the example that was used was, um, building permits, and, uh, maybe the number of permits that came in, and how many were rejected or for whatever reason, or, um, statistics on maybe like the swim team, um, enrollment?
I was, uh, swimming my ground, I was on the water speech recreation commission. We used to get these great reports about, we used to get these great reports about, um, all the programs that were run by that department. Uh, aquatics, how many, uh, swimmers were there on the team, how many, uh, paid swimmers came that month, et cetera, and it would go through senior services, parks, et cetera, and it just really exposed all the things that that department was doing, and I, and I think the same thing could apply to other departments, public works, uh, the planning commission, the planning department, police department, fire department, et cetera, and just exposing, just, just almost like the police blotter, here's the things that's happened or the things that we have done, and here's the stats. Um, it just gives you a sense, and, and the, the reason it came home to me on the planning commission is there's, there's a perception out there that this is a city that says no, and I've been on the planning commission now for a couple of years, and that hasn't been my experience at all, and so I think it's a matter of, of getting the content out there and getting people to see, oh my gosh, they're actually doing quite a lot, they had eighteen meetings on this one building alone to help the person get it done, that sort of thing. So it's just exposing what each department is doing, you know, simple monthly type update, and it gives people a pulse of all the activities.
Thank you.
We're running to a little overlap now, but I did, yeah, a reporting back or follow-up to issues which might be similar to, uh, what the gentleman was just talking about.
Information care package, which can be electronic, for people attending events in the city and areas which need to be, um, swimming, to, uh, visit, uh, or, please.
So there was, uh, two things on committees and commissions. Uh, one was having a roster online of commissions committees, subcommittees, I guess, uh, someone had commented that not all of them have those rosters on there, the, the contact? Yeah, the contact of the folks that are on there, access to approved minutes, um, and a search index or, uh, maybe improved search index on the website.
That's great. Kathy, could we go back to yours? I just couldn't quite hear you, what you said. Sorry.
Information care package, um, can be electronic, for people attending, for instance, swimming, to let them know what the town, whether this is part of your restaurant, to get them to, um, to, um, to get in town and, and hopefully.
We also had, uh, staff profiles, meet your staff, meet your new city manager.
Like it.
Anybody else? Joe, anyone?
I think the last one we have is, uh, more direct communication channels for businesses.
Joe, before you hand that up, did they have any specifics about that, more direct, meaning...
Through, otherwise.
Okay, I'll go. We chose use of a local radio station.
Keeping with the events calendar idea, our group also said see wide events calendar, but specifically recommend Google as the application for that.
We'd like to see an interactive electronic kiosk.
Printed and electronic maps based on activity types, sporting events, et cetera.
I just had one question about decentralized information for the city. Were they talking more about something interactive or something that the people of the city could contribute to, or they wanted all the information in one place because it said centralized information for the city? So if they can just comment on that.
I think it has to do with point of contact. Instead of sending folks to a bunch of different places to get information, I think someone was talking about making, you know, 10 phone calls to get something done. Instead, to be able to call or contact that one person who could then kind of either answer or make sure to send you to the right place. And if anybody in our group wants to chime in on that, it's okay, too.
Okay, back to me, and we also had a common denominator there. Our group also agreed on that. And also to identification of communication medium being used by the city, and maybe more specifically by department.
So electronic communication by department?
Just identification, maybe what is the fire department particularly using? What is the police department in particular using, and public works, et cetera?
A modern day welcome wagon for new residents or new home buyers?
We had PIO, dedicated staff, which I know is part of the plan. I don't know if it was on that list or not, but a dedicated staff came up, was sort of a theme, and in terms of tech support, too, was something that folks, a dedicated tech support.
We came up with statistics on city services or performance measures.
Excuse me, could somebody clarify performance measures on what area or, you know what I mean? What is the goal? Can you clarify performance measures?
The example that was used was building permits, and maybe the number of permits that came in, and how many were rejected or for whatever reason, or statistics on maybe like the swim team enrollment.
We used to get these great reports about, we used to get these great reports about all the programs that were run by that department. Aquatics, how many swimmers were there on the team, how many paid swimmers came that month, et cetera. And it would go through senior services, parks, et cetera. And it just really exposed all the things that that department was doing. And I think the same thing could apply to other departments, public works, the planning commission, the planning department, police department, fire department, et cetera. And just exposing, just, almost like the police blotter, here's the things that's happened or the things that we have done, and here's the stats. It just gives you a sense. And the reason it came home to me on the planning commission is there's a perception out there that this is a city that says no. And I've been on the planning commission now for a couple of years, and that hasn't been my experience at all. And so I think it's a matter of getting the content out there and getting people to see, oh my gosh, they're actually doing quite a lot. They had 18 meetings on this one building alone to help the person get it done, that sort of thing. So it's just exposing what each department is doing, you know, simple monthly type update, and it gives people a pulse of all the activities.
Thank you.
We're running to a little overlap now, but I did have a reporting back or follow-up to issues which might be similar to what the gentleman was just talking about.
So there was two things on committees and commissions. One was having a roster online of commissions committees, subcommittees. I guess someone had commented that not all of them have those rosters on there. The contact? Yeah, the contact of the folks that are on there. Access to approved minutes, and a search index, or maybe improved search index on the website.
That's great. Kathy, could we go back to yours? I just couldn't quite hear you, what you said. Sorry.
We also had staff profiles. Meet your staff, meet your new city manager.
Joe, before you hand that up, did they have any specifics about that? More direct, meaning?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Jeff, hello, Brian. So, yeah, so what I was saying is, like, for instance, for me, for my business, we had two over the years. One was the fire permit that no one could answer for a year or so. For me, didn't know who to talk to, kept on telling me to call somewhere else. And then two, the XP that I didn't know until we reached our contract. So if those were products to us, we would have been fighting and screaming anyways, but maybe it would have been a little bit easier to swallow that money that we have to pay out, someone to answer questions, and it's happening now. And then also, I want to add one more, the communication with emergency services, emergency assets, tsunami warnings, the whole thing. My preschool didn't even know about it. I had to bring it to their attention. And they're in flood zone A on Rosita. I would think that festival should have been known via email, phone call. I had to bring it to their attention. They have no plan. Their plan was to go to church on Adobe next to a creek.
That might not be the best one. Thanks, thanks, Jeff.
We had a monthly column in the newspaper, like a city newsletter. Someone mentioned the mayor, but then it kind of turned into just a general city one.
Well, I could add one more from our group. We did have postcards/mailed flyers as a suggestion for reaching out to those who may not have internet access, because we were talking about how you reach the most people with layers of communication, not just the tech end.
Thank you very much for helping with that part of the process. I'm going to move this around so that the council can see it. And then the next step is for it to come back to you all and give you a chance to talk about the plan, what occurred tonight, comments, questions. And then ultimately, what I want is talking from you about moving forward. We'll get to you in a future meeting with an implementation plan.
You're blocking the camera?
We put these on the bulletin board behind you. Would you be able to see it over there?
We're okay. We wrote it.
So here's the comments. How would you like to proceed?
Can I ask a question? And if somebody in the audience has an answer, we had an email from someone that couldn't come tonight, but actually suggested two-way. A lot of the output of information, how do we get information back? And I was looking for some more suggestions. I mean, we've tried things like surveys and things like, but there's problems with everything. So I'm curious if anybody has any, any ideas about some of that kind of stuff. Yeah, Lori?
Hi, you could always on the website have a comment section where people can post, obviously not for public view, but privately and send things in. You might have to weed out some strange stuff, but at least you would get that feedback.
Mike?
One way to take in a lot of information like that is to almost have a survey on the website. You can have some basic questions that are constantly repeated, so you can trend in information on a scale of one to five, are we doing, and then you could add a question of a quarter or whatever to get people's feedback. And the reason why I suggest that, it's easier to digest data that's, you know, one to five than it is a bunch of open-ended comments. But the open-ended comments are often where, that's where the gold is. It's just, it's tougher to digest, so it's good to complement both.
Good ideas. Was there another one, Bill? Did you, somebody? Get the mic to him.
You know, on the website or something, frequently asked questions, so the answers are already there, because you're going to get a lot of the same questions asked. So that would streamline some of that.
Although I do want to hear from people, so those are good. Trish?
So there's a website called Suggestion OX that is completely anonymous. And, you know, sometimes people would like to give input, maybe they don't want to be identified. Obviously, the downside is that they're not going to get direct answer to that. But Suggestion OX.
O?
OX, yes. And it's completely anonymous.
Those are good ideas.
I have a question on that. When you send your Suggestion OX, suggestions in, what happens?
So you just receive it, and then it's up to you what you want to do with that information. But, I mean, if you're looking for any avenues, sometimes people just don't even want to be identified. And it's 100% guaranteed. It's free. I use it on our PTO website, and I've received feedback.
I just want to say, it's amazing, all of the ideas that came out tonight, and I really appreciate the forum and the way this was set up. One of the things that comes out to me, tons of great ideas, and of course, you know, the concern is, what kind of expectation level do we set up? And the fact that, you know, staff and, we need people to manage the websites and, you know, all these multitude of other things. And I don't know if anybody has a comment on this, but how do we set up an appropriate level of expectation for these things? For instance, 24-hour response to emails, or if somebody has issues, like I really like the idea regarding a centralized information, almost like a triage or something. So for instance, if somebody had an issue, that they had a place to report it and to get feedback, and so they weren't going around to five different people. I think that sounds like a great idea. It's just, we're currently understaffed, and, you know, to an extent, and we're struggling just with what we have right now. So that's just something I'm kind of pondering, is how do we manage the expectation level and, you know, prioritize some of these excellent ideas?
To piggyback on that, I was thinking that too, so that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, and that there's really an authority, so that there is a puristic, shall we say, response. Also worried about staff time. I mean, if we want them to respond, that's great, but if it's also not enabling them to do their job, that could be a problem. So how do we monitor what's reasonable and what is over? We also heard city calendar, I think we've heard that numerous times in life. It was touched upon on several, I think that because we want to be a destination city for tourists and others around the Bay Area, knowing what's going on within our city, and the idea of catching people from regional things. I think that if we hop on that really quickly. The other thing that I was watching for is that the community at large perspective is always like public forums and things like that, so we don't become a city of a selected focus groups, polling groups, subcommittees. I think that's, I know a lot of things are put in alphabetically, but I would like to see that, you know, look a focus a bit more centralized. But the feedback ones that we were just mentioning were great.
And I know when Ginny and I were looking at all this and talking with the focus groups, there's so many good ideas out there, and we're really going to depend, I think, on staff and the development of this to communicate the capabilities, so that we're not overstretching with our goals. And I think, like Karen mentioned, that we're setting up a proper expectation. You know, if you have portals where you can, you know, get feedback, or if you're expecting a response in a certain amount of time, if we're putting that out there and not satisfying that, that's almost worse. So we really do want to make sure that we're listening to staff and doing what we can within our confines. But then also, you know, it's our job to hear the community and to prioritize what we do do with that, with those available resources. And then we're just going to have to continue to manage that and look for efficient ways to do it, whether it's with technology, or whether it's, you know, what have you. I think one of the things, the challenges that we went back and forth with was, you know, how to communicate with the different segments of people, because people mentioned, you know, email, or web, or mail, and I think people like to get their information different ways. So we struggle with that. And we'll look for different ways that staff has, that they can deliver the message in a variety of different ways, whether it's the same message through different portals to people that like to get the information a different way. We're going to depend on them for that. And we look forward to hearing the implementation plan, and I'm sure that'll be in a number of months.
I was going to say that I think a lot of the stuff, I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I know a lot of cities have a 3-1-1, which is if something happens, you know, you dial 3-1-1 and they tell you what department to go to. Well, we can't afford to hire somebody, but there's no reason we can't have a tab or a link on the city webpage that says 3-1-1. Another, for this, the city information, because I've forgotten, phone calls, overflowed, garbage cans, what do you call this, change the street light, I mean, stuff that's important to citizens but kind of mundane and, you know, just needs to be taken care of. And one, the one issue is, I know, you know, like a community calendar, I know there's, over the years, I've been here 30 years, there's been many groups trying to start one. I mean, the chambers try to has one, the school district has one, Patch has one. And the issue is, is we're, no calendar, a calendar is only as good as what's input. And getting the buy-in from Little League, soccer, swimming, volleyball, you know what I mean? And that's just sports. Then you start getting into, you know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, quilters, knitters. You really start to, so there really needs to be some sort of benefit or education for a lot of the stuff that we have to do. So part of this plan should include the knowledge of how do we get the word out that this is available to the city, or the citizens. The idea of a welcome packet, if you look at Pier 39, you register at Pier 39, and they give you a click, and then you get two hours free parking, 50% off this, 10% off this. And that's something that could happen for like the sports groups. But again, we're dependent on this, you know, there's a soccer match that brings 2,000 kids here every year, but we're depending on the soccer people to tell the chamber to put this packet together. You also have an issue that the hotels occupancy on weekends is 98%. So they're not going to give a discount on a weekend, you know what I mean? So it is, there's different forces that all need to be worked, working, worked with. Also, I know Ginny, Sue, and I were at this thing that in terms of managing communication tools, I have the name at home, I forgot to bring the notes today, but there is one thing open to cities that they can take and enter it in one place, and it automatically goes to Facebook, Twitter, everything. It's a service, and I believe it's free, so I'll get that to Lori. So there is a lot of ways to manage the technology at minimal cost. And it was, and with that one, was that really kind of cool, in that you could subscribe to like All Pacifica, or just Pacifica Fire, or Pacifica PD, or any combination thereof. So that one was actually pretty cool, how it was working. It was very minimal cost also. But I think we, some of these have been done before, and we don't, you know, we don't need, a friend of mine who were, business I worked at, said the pioneers, the first ones out are the ones that got the arrows in the back. The guys that followed the trail didn't. So I think we can look at other cities to kind of reinvent, rather than reinvent the wheel.
Mike, you're so correct. You want Lori some, some direction from us. And first of all, I want to thank absolutely everybody that came out tonight, and I want to thank the staff also for, for putting in the time to be here. I think it's great to have everybody. I'm just thrilled with this whole process. So thank you, audience, thank you, people who sent us emails and calls and feedback about it. So I just want to thank, and I want to thank Mayor Stone and former council member. It's weird to say that, former council member. I know her name well, but it's former council member because she's still a part of this, even though she was a former council member. But Ginny Jakewood really put in a tremendous amount of effort and work on this, and I really like the polish that was, that was put here. I would say a couple of little things in terms of direction. One, I particularly liken the plan, we have given a lot of additional methods, and I think sometimes the methods are going to come, some are going to be more apparent in certain situations than others. So the method may sometimes fit the need, what the goal is. That may be a way of sort of thinking about how do we strategize it? Because Karen, you're absolutely right. I mean, the limitation on staff is significant, so we have to. But in my way of thinking, the websites update, frequently asked questions, those sorts of things, making the website more usable as that first stop is key. I know, Lori, you write beautifully, so not that I'm giving you any direction about this, because it comes from the whole council, but, you know, a city manager column at the very least would be an easy thing. I also think that the strategies that Lynn and, that you guys recommended in the plan, particularly the organizational strategies, were really good ones. City manager as the public information officer in lieu of having one, so that she's the focal here, and involving certain staff in the process. I think that moving through those priorities in just that section is really important. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, don't forget that, for example, economic development actually talked about some of the issues. I mean, we started down a path of making a one-stop shop. We did the planning survey and overhauled, and I know, George, you used some of the information from that to help bring in your own ideas and do a lot of work with planning. But we could do a one-stop shop for business and the business questions, we've talked about that, maybe connect it with the website. But we also talked about a package at one point. So whoever ends up as council liaison on economic development, really bringing those things forward. Because Horace, you've been there when we've talked about sports events and having that thing, how to get those packages together. The welcome package idea actually was, was brought up through realtors at one point. You know, we had so many different things, and again, working off of the backs of volunteers and just a staff or two, it, sometimes we can't do them all. So having economic development maybe prioritize some of the things they want to take on, because they're going to be doing some goal setting. So that's just my general feedback, but I'm very excited and energized by this. I think it's really great.
I do think when we start looking at the website development, that it should, that it is not just for communications, but this is also a tool, economic development, if there's an economic development coordinator hired, he or she would need to attract businesses to make the full commitment to economic development. So I think when it's designed, we, I mean, I guess you can add pages and stuff like that. I'm not that familiar with the technology. But we want to be sure that that component's in there about it, so.
Next door, I think was mentioned twice, might be a good idea that the community know what next door is. And if I'm correct, I think San Carlos actually uses it.
Pacifica has several.
I know, but the city of San Carlos uses it as a city. And I think one other, and one other city, I forget which other Bay Area city uses it. I don't know, I don't think, I don't know.
I'd just like to add that I think a lot of what we're talking about is kind of a cultural change in the way things are done. And that's why I really appreciate this forum. This is new, and this is something that hasn't been done before. And I find it really refreshing and really great to hear your feedback. And when I was walking around, I heard a couple things. One thing in particular I heard that I thought was great that I didn't hear mentioned was the fact that once we start this, it's really important that people can garner some trust and the belief that we're serious about changing the way things are done, and we continue to do so. So we should be sure that whatever we do incorporate into this plan, we continue with. And we continue to engage the public as, as interactively as possible in our decision-making process. So thank you again, everybody, for being part of this event tonight.
And I think we mentioned an evaluation component, so that we constantly check on our communication. our communication.
I also wanted to thank Lori. I really appreciate that the council's not up there, but down here with the people. That's why I used to be in the school board, and I have to admit, I really appreciate this format where we're more listening and eye-to-eye with people than up there. Thank you, Lori, and staff, I guess, too.
And that the microphones all work great.
All right. So, yeah, I just wanted to chime in as well. You know, I think there's a lot of different meetings that we all will kind of enjoy more. They'll always be evolving. They'll be, you know, I think two, three years ago, nobody would have known what next door was. So these things are going to continue to evolve, and there'll be more things that are, that are coming out there. For me, Lori, I think the biggest thing is just proactive communication. There'll always be the best way to do it, and we need to continually move that, but just that we're proactively communicating. And I know we spoke a couple times about, if there's something that's, that's coming up, that is on the horizon, that we communicate it. And then if, as it approaches closer, that we communicate. As it's happening, that we communicate it. Once we're about to make a decision, that we communicate. Once that decision's, or whatever the fallout is from that is going to be implemented, that it's communicated. And then a follow-up is the way I really see, you know, real proactive and healthy communication. Because there's questions along those, along the way there. And I think of things that are going on now, like, you know, the wastewater basin there that we have to create in Lindemar. And there's a lot of unanswered questions about that, but it's, it's stuff that we can get out there, so that there are less unanswered questions about it. And then as we go through the steps, that we, we stay with people, and that if we have a study session like this, that people are continually updated, like an email list, like Lori passed around today, so that if we do something on the communications plan, that your emails will be there, and you'll get a notification about the council meeting that this comes back to us at, so that you're in the loop. Just simple things like that, that are a click of the button, that we can do with current staff. You know, we talked a little bit about this, this structure, and I think part of the engagement about getting feedback is just having a meeting like this. And I think when, when we all sat down and talked about what's the best format, we wanted to have something that's where we're listening 90% of the time. And I think that's where a lot of the good public policy starts, and that we could go back and forth, and it wasn't as formal as a three-minute something. You know, you can ask, ask a question and clarify what you're thinking. And I think even, it was, it was very apparent here when we're going through these things on the board, when you ask the questions, a lot more of it came out, you could actually really understand and truly understand. And I think that's where the synergy in our community will come from. So I, I want, I'd like to see these types of meetings, regardless of the issue, go forward, and I think that's going to be a big part of our interaction. And I think too, Lori, and with staff, I don't want there to be too much pressure on staff, because I do, I mean, there's so many ideas up there, you can just see them up there, and it can be overwhelming. And I think that, you know, traditionally, the city hasn't been proactive in communications. We desperately want to do it, but I think in part of the relationship with the public and setting expectations, we need to start slow, do something very well, and then build on it from there. And, and I just want to say that for staff, so that they're not overwhelmed, because I see that huge list, and it looks like a lot, a lot of work, and I know that you're already short-staffed, so. But I do know that there's a couple of things that we can start with and make them our own, and then make them part of our culture, and then add to it, so. So can I ask if everyone is okay with giving feedback, or they're done giving feedback?
One more thing?
Oh, yeah, please.
I can't see for sure if it's up there, but I know it was, I heard it in one of the groups, was a subscription, so that somebody wants planning minutes and agendas, they could get it that way. I think we already have it by mail. I don't know if it's by email.
We do have it. We have a council agenda packet that people can sign up for, but it's not something that's publicized. And that's something that, you know, hey, you want to get a council agenda?
Or whatever committee they wanted.
Yeah. So, so can I ask Lori, I know the council's all given you feedback, but next steps? I know that you'll be formulating an action plan and come back to us. Can you talk about timeframe?
Can you get back to them? There is a lot up here, and I appreciate your comments about pacing ourselves. I'm going to interpret it sort of starting small, doing something of high quality to get started. And so that's what I heard you say, that's what I was hoping to hear you say, because there is a lot on this list, and staff's already doing a lot, as I know you all are aware. But there's a lot of things we can do better, and staff's already started working on some of those. You may be aware that there are some staff members who've already done the research into next door, and have started working on a policy for us, so you're going to be seeing more of that. So there is something, are some things that have been underway. What I see as the next step is, for those of you who have not signed, given us your email address, please do that. We'll keep you informed about what's going to happen with this process. We will type up these lists and post them on the website. We'll have to create a place to do that, but that should be relatively easy, so you can see your words. And then I'm going to come back to the council. I've looked at the calendar, and I think I'm, probably can come back in March with the implementation plan, that will lay out what I've heard them say, and what staff and I think that we can accomplish on a timeframe, timeline. So I've looked at that, I think March 24th is one of our regular meetings, so I'm going to tell you all that, so you can put it on your calendars. If you want to follow this process, you can plan to be here. And then we'll present to the council what we think we can do and when we can do it, and get some more feedback from them, and get their, hopefully, approval at that time, and then we'll move forward with that. So that's what I'd like to do, if that's the council's pleasure.
Excellent. Thank you. That sounds wonderful. Anyone has any comments? Great. So before we close, I just want to thank everyone again for participating. You know, I look around the room, there's a lot of people that are really involved in the community, a lot of pillars of our community here. And as we go forward in the evolution of this, it's going to be really important to get your feedback, and to really let us know how we need to communicate and how we should communicate to make the city go forward. Thank you so much for coming this evening, and we'll look forward to the next one.